All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the Commission, your first item is to conduct your first citizen participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment. This time is limited to comments on items that are on today's agenda. Those wishing to speak on a posted agenda item, please step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment period and turn it back to Ms. Maynard.
Thanks, Chairman. Your next item is to approve your agenda. It's in order and ready for your approval.
All right, I don't tend to obtain a motion to approve the agenda. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is to receive the CEO report, and today we are going to give you an update on our executive team. It is with really a heavy heart that we officially say goodbye to Francis Julian, who is with us today. Francis is leaving the RTC. We tried to lock him in a closet, tie him up, but he broke out, and he's going back to the private sector. I thought we were ahead when we stole him from the private sector, but I actually had the last laugh because they got him back. But we are really going to miss him. He joined us in 2019. He -- this is a gentleman that was so passionate about our customers that during the pandemic, when service was really difficult, Francis actually got in his car in the middle of the night to pick up customers because of bus service had been missed. He is the real deal, and he -- his fingerprints are all over the RTC. We are going to miss him tremendously. So I wanted to bring Francis down. Francis, come on up. Here he is. And Francis, maybe a few words, and then I'm going to invite you to come down. We have your favorite Crystal Bus, one for you this time. We'd like to --
I'm happy I didn't do the Crystal Bus video for myself, at least, so. Well, MJ, thank you. Thank you so much. What a ride. I'm looking at Angela, David, Mark, and you, MJ. Thank you so much, and as you board. What a great board. You were always so supportive, so really, really thank you for all you've done. I want to thank the drivers, the drivers as well, and all my wonderful staff. I've said it many, many times since I left. This is by far in my professional career the best team I had the privilege to work with. And they're so professional, hardworking, and dedicated, so tremendous pleasure. So, but it's just an au revoir, so I'll see you soon, I'm pretty sure. So, thank you.
It sounds like the rain clouds are clapping for you. Very impressive, very impressive.
I'm just missing the thunder.
Francis, yeah, come on down. We'll take a picture. Francis and the board.
I can definitely say on behalf of the board, it has been fantastic to have Francis leading transit in our city here, and appreciate all he's done.
Whoops. Oh, your flops. Yeah, you stepped on my whole foot.
I don't think so. No, I think we're good.
Francis, thanks again. We love you. We're going to miss you, but good news is Francis is going to remain a Las Vegas resident, so yay. So now, we are going to officially welcome our new Deputy CEO over the Transit Division, Mr. Chris Cole. Chris brings more than two decades of operations expertise within Ohio's public transit industry. Previously, he held roles at the transit agencies in the Cincinnati, Dayton, and Columbus metropolitan areas. We are thrilled that he's decided to move out here with his wife and his two dogs, and maybe his kids might come out and say hi every now and then, but he is going to be a tremendous asset to the organization. Very excited that he joins, so Mr. Chris Cole.
Welcome aboard, Chris.
And next, we have exciting news to share about our progress with grant applications. The grant, the team here at the RTC, again, they do such a good job going after every grant opportunity. Last month, we received a $630,000 grant from the Federal Transit Administration to implement our Equitable Access to Mobility Action Plan, which will identify potential locations for neighborhood transportation hubs across North Las Vegas, Downtown Las Vegas, the historic West Side, and East Las Vegas. The study will also identify potential complete street improvements to ensure the safety of all road users, included upgraded transit amenities, to provide more shade and comfort for transit riders, and we look forward to working with your staff to complete this action plan. Next, we would like to recognize Commander Devon Smith from our Security Operator Marksman. Safety and Security Compliance Supervisor Robert Palumbo went to the Bonneville Transit Center to surprise Commander Smith with an award. Let's watch.
Thanks, MJ. This month, we're recognizing Officer Devon Smith, who's a commander with Marksman Security Corporation. Officer Smith recognized a young female who was reported as a missing person early that week by Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. She was also accompanied by three other female juveniles. It was quick action and keen eye. Commander Smith notified the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. They responded to the incident and were able to positively identify all members as missing persons. On behalf of the RTC, we'd like to thank Commander Smith for keeping our passengers and the community safe, and we'd like to present him with the Crystal Bus Award. Let's go and surprise him. Devon, I just want to say thank you for all that you do. We presented you with this Crystal Bus Award, and it really means a lot to the community and our bachelors for keeping us safe, and so thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Just want to say thank you for the Crystal Bus. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for allowing me to work here and doing my job. Just doing my job, just doing what I was trained for, and I'm going to continue doing the best I can.
Is Devon here? Well done, Devon.
He -- what a great employee. So next, we recognize two RTC employees with Superstars of the Quarter. Our first award goes to Sierra Stalen from the Paratransit Team. Former -- I hate saying that, Francis. Former Deputy CEO Francis Julian has a video to present this item.
Thank you, MJ. We're now celebrating our first Superstar of the Quarter for the second quarter, Sierra Stalen. Sierra works for the Quality Assurance Team, and she is amazing. She always makes it a point to go to the new hire class, to meet the drivers, talk about safety, security. In the last year alone, Sierra was actually -- went to 360 location to make sure that the geo-point, so basically where the drop-off and pickup locations are located, are accurate for both drivers and our customers. And obviously, that makes a huge difference for our customers that are waiting in the right place, and it doesn't take as much time for a driver to find a customer. So for that amazing work, let's go and surprise her. Wow. It smells like brain sweat in here. You guys must be working really, really hard. I see somebody that's red -- turning red already. I think she knows she just won the Superstar of the Quarter. Sierra, hey! Congratulations! So for all the amazing work you're doing for our customers, the input you have with the drivers, thank you so much. So, thanks.
I just wanted to say thank you for the nomination. I really appreciate it. Honestly, it's our department, you know, it's a tiny but mighty department, so it is a team effort. But I really appreciate the recognition, guys. Thank you. Thank you!
There she is. Give her a hand. Well done.
Thank you, Sierra. The second superstar is from our Transit Department, Maria Brace. Here's a quick video, also featuring Francis, who surprised Maria during a staff meeting.
Thank you, MJ. We're now celebrating our second Superstar of the Quarter of the second quarter, Maria Brace. Maria was fantastic. Obviously, when our great Golden Knights won the Stanley Cup, she literally had one day to organize all the game day service, to take all the fans at the T-Mobile Arena and on the strip. This was a huge, huge undertaking, and what a success. So let's go and surprise our Superstar of the Quarter, Maria Brace. Good morning, good morning. Uh-oh, there's a Superstar of the Quarter winner here. And it might be the person that just said, oh, wow, congratulations, Maria Brace! It's for, obviously, game day service for the Stanley Cup Parade. You were so fantastic organizing all of this in one day, obviously with the help of your team, but still. I mean, that -- what an undertaking, so thank you so, so much. MJ is so proud of that event, and we're so proud of you, so thank you.
I want to thank MJ, the board, Francis, and the leadership here in transit. I appreciate this award. I was not expecting it. I'm very humbled to come to work every day and do what I do best and get awarded for it. It's a good place here at the RTC. Thank you so much.
Maria, are you here? Stand up. Well done.
And I say this quite frequently, the RTC is the agency that it is, not so much because of us, but because of these employees. They are fantastic, so really honored to work with all of them. Thanks, Maria and Sierra. And then lastly, we wanted to provide you an update regarding our procurement of security services for our Transit and Facilities contract. Currently, Marksman Security administers the services, and that contract expires the end of June of 2024. So we're going to spend the next several months undergoing the request for procurement process. The proposed solicitation is, again, a two-step process. Step one will evaluate the proposers on their minimum qualifications. Only proposers that meet those minimum qualifications will move on to step two. Step two will evaluate technical elements and the price proposal. The contract is a proposed four-year base plus three one-year options. Step one of the process will confirm all proposers meet the minimum qualifications that you see here on the screen within the last five years prior to moving on to step two. So those, again, those qualifications are: public transit security with officers riding onboard buses and/or trains, single accounts greater than 5,000 hours per week, recent experience with operating a dispatch center, mobile patrol and response, and armed officers. And then all applicants are asked to provide a reference list, and we do go over all of those references. Proposers who meet all of the minimum qualifications from step one will move on to step two of the RFP, which is a technical and price evaluation. We're proposing that the technical portion will account for 60% of the score, and the price proposal will account for 40% of the score. And so you can see here, again, step two in the RFP allows for the interview and further evaluation of the top proposers in that step-two process, so they'll have to present a transition and startup plan, again, their experience and references, what their staffing and personal plan is, certainly employee training, their management structure, key personnel, who's going to be boots on the ground here, and then any innovation in technology that they may bring. The evaluation team will be a combination of seven total RTC staff and external evaluators. And then, following board approval of the proposed procurement considerations today, staff will discuss the proposed scope of services at the August 23rd security meeting and get input from those members. And again, the members consist of TransDev Management Team, bus operators, members of the union, the local ATU, and RTC staff. We're going to bring the item -- we'll make any edits based on comments we hear from that security committee, and then we'll bring the item to the RTC Board for approval in Q1 of 2024. We'll issue a notice to proceed and enter into a transition period between March and June 30th, 2024, with a contract to start on July 1, 2024. And this concludes the CEO report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Maynard. Commissioner Zagerblum.
Yes, so are we giving up on the idea of having our own transit police, getting legislation for that?
No, we are absolutely still on board to have that discussion, to bring on our own transit police.
So if this is a five-year contract, how would that fit together?
Well, we would look at introducing a hybrid model, which we found is the most common. So it would be a small division of transit security officers here at the RTC that would also oversee the contracted staff. So they -- our transit security officers would be the go-between between Metro and the contractor team. So it's a model that's working quite well here in the U.S. But so to put your point, Commissioner, we absolutely are going to -- we're working on language for the next 2025 session that would allow us to do just that, to bring on our own transit police department.
Can you explain to a layman like me, what are the steps you need to go through to get a transit police department?
Well, what we would do is put together a report, sort of a ROI, best practices on the difference between contracted security, having an MOU potentially with the local police department, and then hiring or developing our own transit division. We'll bring that to you with a cost analysis, the pros and the cons. That's where we'll start. But we would look, again, there are so many contracts around the United States that we'll be able to look at, talk to our peers, best practices, and so it really is, again, we'll start with bringing you all of the ideas for your direction, for your approval, and then go from there.
So this isn't something that we'll need to go through the legislature or through the governor, or it will?
Yeah. Actually, I'm going to turn -- let me -- Deputy CEO Angela Castro, I'm going to have her take it from here, Ange.
Yes, it will require legislation, and so we would need the authority. We have limited ability right now, and I think it's, I want to say, I believe it's peace offer is what we can do right now. And so we would have to go and get authority to start our own transit police department. So just to give you the steps, we would have to, like running any bill, we would have to amend our section to give us the authority. We would have to go to this Assembly, go to the Senate, and then get the governor's signature. But what we've learned in, you know, what we've learned, and I brought this up at our last briefing, our last legislative update, is that we really need to start here, and then we need to get stakeholder buy-in, and then we need to educate. We need to educate community groups. We need to provide you with more information as a board. And then we also need to educate legislators, and so we are working on that. As MJ said, we will start first with, you know, a report that we will present. We will then form a stakeholder group, and then from the stakeholder group, it will be mixed with what we're thinking would be a hybrid approach of legislators plus community stakeholders, including the operators, a representation from the operators, and then go from there. So more to come on that. It is something that we are looking at.
Mayor.
And I thank you, you, Mr. Chairman. That obviously is two or three years out. So this contract and RFP that you're looking at is for 2025, the next rollover with extension accepted. But to have a hybrid, and to answer the Commissioner's question, I would imagine with a legislature that meets every other year, and we just convened, there's no way this is going to happen. I mean, everything has to get in place for it, but it's not realistic to be on the buses or in force in 2024, 2025.
That is correct. We need statutory authority.
And the other piece I would ask, if this hybrid concept is followed through, where is the ultimate liability then as, does that mean the liabilities with the state, with the county, or with the RTC for any damages of any sort to the individual or company?
I think that I want to answer, unpack a couple of things, since folks have mentioned an array of issues that they've spotted, and for not being a lawyer, Mayor, you've spotted one of them, so.
She's married to one.
So have heard.
And live with two sons who are.
So first to answer Commissioner Zagerblum's question with regard to the contract, I think what we've just gotten on observing is that we need maximum flexibility to address the issue, and it's a long period of time. So whatever contract that we ultimately enter into, which MJ appropriately described, they'll have applicable off-ramps and flexibility into the agreement. To the degree we end up with an MOU with the existing police force, liability would function in a very similar way that it functions now. The risk transfer is, of course, put into the agreements, but ultimately, law enforcement has statutory immunity for certain things, but also risk for others. So I would say that to answer your question, Mayor Goodman, the risk is no different than it is in its existing condition today.
Commissioner Vice Chair.
One of my -- I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please.
One of my questions would be, before we dive into the legislature and everything, I'd love to see some data that says, if we do this in-house, does it make a difference? And are there, is there definable points that say this will improve the situation? Because I don't want to go down that path if we're not going to see a marked improvement in from what we have now.
Thanks, Councilwoman Cho. You're exactly right, which is the intent of the report that we would provide to you, again, to look to you for your direction and insight, but that's exactly right. It would be really an ROI, and it would describe the pros and the cons of different approaches, and so, yes, we'll do that.
And just not to take more airtime here, but I think that the difference that we also need to embrace is the fact that legislative movement takes a different period of time than entering into an MOU than entering into something that we already have authority for. So there may be merit in putting the architecture in place. It doesn't necessarily mean we have to then implement it, but we have the authority to do so if it's appropriate.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, probably for council more than anything else. So this, the process, of course, it'll take a while, but once the RFP or contract's in place, if Metro actually does get fully staffed, say, in the next year or so, does, one of the options that we've also talked about is coming into an MOU to provide, how should I say, enhanced enforcement through Metro. Does any potential MOU that we might have with Metro or any other inter-agency agreement with Metro, will this impact this RFP with whoever our contractor is going to be?
No, no. As a matter of fact, I have a meeting with the sheriff next week, just to check in with him, but no, it would have. It would just be a complement to what we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor.
Thank you. So speaking of the legislature, would this be a home rule, Dillon's Rule, carve out how we would fund it and how we would be able to do it? Would we get into that swamp?
We, so according to even, like, I'm going to reiterate what Greg said, it depends on what the authority we're asking. We're not asking them to pay for it. We're just asking the authority to have peace officers. So based on that, with the, how we would pay for it would be up to us, but the peace officers doesn't have, we're not asking them to pay for it, so I think we'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Similar to school police, yes, you're right.
I guess the biggest problem is, right now, a private contractor can't arrest anyone, and which our authority, if we had our own police, could do, and I know that was one of the drivers' concerns.
You're correct.
All right, and perhaps Mr. Cole, coming from another jurisdiction, has some insight into that as we move forward. All right, any other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report from Director Tracy Larkin Thomason.
Good morning, everybody. Got a short report here, but I'm just going to also point out that year-to-date, we've had, while we have 209 lives lost, it's down 11 and 1/2% from last year. And also, the crashes themselves are down almost 13% from last year. More specifically, Clark County crashes are down 6%, and their fatalities are down almost 11%. So it's a, it's the trend going in the right direction. Hope it continues. We also just kicked off an Interstate 15 South state line to Sloan feasibility study. We're really evaluating the changes in the land use and the impact to, you know, future travel patterns and volumes. We're working closely also with GOED, looking at what's coming in. And as Mayor Goodman has often pointed out, I-15 is our lifeline, and we want to make sure that as we are putting interchanges and as we're working with Brightline and new facilities going in, that we're doing it with intent, that we're really looking at it. And speaking of Brightline, more good news. It continues on. While we don't have news about the grant yet, we are expecting it in September. Also, they did just get all the clearances from the Fonzie, the finding of no significant impacts. All the environmental permits have passed. Everything's cleared with SHIP-O, so things are on target to move forward, and I hope that in another month or two, that we'll have really big news to share. And last, I just want to say that we have been working closely, starting a working group with the AGC statewide on work zone safety, and we're looking at various ways to really improve, particularly in the construction work zones. And one of the things we are talking about is working with DMV, and I have, I'm talking with DMV, about adding a section on the driver's test on work zone safety. So particularly for first-time drivers that they, as a teenage, kind of targeting the teenagers to just have, be more aware of what's going on there. And that concludes my report.
All right, any questions or comments for the director?
Just want to ask, any ideas on how we can get our tax back into the legislature?
No.
No special session coming up or anything?
All right. Seeing none, we'll move back to the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to approve the Consent Agenda, which consists of items 5 through 32, and can be taken in one motion.
Entertain a motion. All right, there's a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Chairman. Next item is Agenda 33. It's to receive information from our legal counsel. There is nothing to discuss today, so we can move on to your last agenda item, which is to conduct your final citizen participation period.
All right, good. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Please step forward to the microphone and state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. All right, I have Shelley Jones. Would you like to go first? We'll go here first.
Good morning.
Yeah, sorry, Ms. Jones over here is going to speak, and then you can go up next. Thank you. Yeah?
Good morning. My name is Shelley, S-H-E-L-L-E-Y, Jones, J-O-N-E-S. I'm so used to spelling my name. It doesn't bother me anymore. Anyway, I want to talk about what happened to me last Thursday, the 3rd of August. Mulder was at the vet because he had an infection, and he had all his teeth pulled. I was sitting outside with my walker. So I ask you, how can somebody who has sight, driving a vehicle, put me down as a no-show when I'm sitting outside? That really irritated me. I got sick because of the heat. I've had heat illness previous, and each time you get it, it gets worse. Thank God, I was only sick for a day and a half. However, it cost me $13 altogether to go from Point A to Point B, which is the vet's, to pick him up, because they close at 3:00, and then to Point C on North Round Park to meet my husband, and we were celebrating our anniversary. And thank God, I had the money. However, that money was designated for my bus pass, and I had to spend it to get to where I needed to and to pick my companion up. That really irritates me. On a good note, I love the Paratransit drivers. They're great. They have good attitudes. I like RTC On Demand. They're great. I like the U-Serve program. The drivers are great. And I'm looking forward to any other new programs you have going. And I definitely want to see safety on the fixed route buses to protect the drivers and the clients who ride them, as well as anybody who rides Paratransit. Safety is always number one, always number one. So have a good morning.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Sir, if you want to step forward.
How y'all doing today? Nice seeing y'all paying attention to.
Nice seeing y'all paying attention to me. That's great. Yeah, I brought my daughter here. My name's Brian Heglin. I'm a driver for TransDev. Responsibility, routine, choices, bids, guarantees, fulfillment, contract, negotiate, road construction, Fairbox. Yeah, everything's running through my mind every day as I drive the bus to do my best. I'm the hardest person on myself. I critique myself daily to be perfect. And it's my first time being here, so a little strange looking at y'all staring at me. Oh, jeez, under hourglass. All right. Yeah, I'd like to thank TransDev for taking control of the contract and giving us the chance to be drivers and giving us the tools to go out there. Appreciate them, their leadership for listening to me out in the hallway and stuff. That was fantastic, being able to voice my opinion to them. And, you know, there's some issues that really need to be addressed, and I talked to them about them. Hopefully, they're addressed, because I'd hate to come here next month and just lose my mind, forget to take my meds, and get up here and ramble on a little crazy. And, yeah, I want my weekends back. That would be great. Someone made a choice to not give weekends, three-day weekends we've had for 10 years at the Sunset Yard. They gave one out of 600 bids, over 600 bids, one Friday, Saturday, Sunday, one Saturday, Sunday, Monday. I looked at the bids, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Wait, wait, where's Friday, Saturday, Sunday? It's not there. It wasn't an option. Please give them options back, you know, whether they're 20, 30, 40, 50. You have people on the strip that have been there 20, 30 years. You know, we're putting in our time, please. And if any of you got time today, go to the Bonneville Transit Center, 2:36 PM, Boulder Highway. Bus will not pull out. I'm there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I don't get relieved. 30 minutes. People sitting there, 50 people sitting there. It's hot. It's hot. I feel bad seeing them every day. I'm telling, I go out and tell them, hey, your bus ain't going to be here. I'm sorry. It's going to be the bus behind me. You know? I mean, let's get it done, guys. Hey, I thought I'd go over three minutes, but yeah, I appreciate everything. Thank you. Let's, um, work it out and get it all together. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heglin. Eric Hupp.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Chairperson, Board, MJ. My name's Eric Hupp. I'm a paratransit operator. Worked very closely with MJ and Francis in the past. I'd like to say that they really care about the community, and I'm hoping Mr. Cole coming in has that same kind of fire and is willing to work with paratransit drivers, not just the management, so that we can get things done. Many of us that are there at paratransit that didn't choose to resign as a result of the lockdown or the long hours, you know, the fact that we're facing needing so many operators that we don't have, we stay for the community. And anytime that I, that I can look at a board member or an RTC, you know, upper management, and you're fighting for the same thing, that's important to me as a driver. I'm not the only one out there, you know, that's concerned about Shelley here, who I've been picking up for five years, and others, of course. And I'm glad to see that the board, Madam Mayor, and RTC, that you guys are really there working for us, and I'm hoping to work more with you, Mr. Cole, about pros and cons and things that are going on moving forward to help our community, not just us drivers. We have a management team at MB right now that is working with drivers. You know, we're thankful for that. There's a lot of, a lot of gravel, a lot of bumps to go over yet, you know, between management and a possible incoming new company here in a year. But your board and the hierarchy here at RTC is important to us that you'll work with us and not just management teams. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hupp. We appreciate you. Next speaker, sir.
Morning. My name is Eric Christ Richmond, and I'd like to thank the lovely Mayor Carolyn Goldman and the great RTC Commission for the dedicated work that you've done for years. I'm bringing something before you right now about a bus stop ID 2056. It was on Southwest Corner of Sahara and Paradise, right behind the Sahara Hotel. It was convenient, safe, far from the curb, and had shade. I don't know, maybe a month ago or so, I went by that same stop to take the bus. There was no bus stop. And I asked people going by, I said, well, where's the bus stop that was here? They didn't know because they didn't take the bus, like the people who evidently changed the bus stop. They moved it around one-half mile south. So I started walking south because that was the direction I was going. I didn't know I would find, but I knew I'd eventually come upon a bus stop. So as I walked, it was around a half a mile, I felt. It was close to the curb, had no shade. It was very disrespectful, I felt. So what I would like to know is, oh, plus, that is a long walk for the handicapped, for the senior citizens, and for mothers with vulnerable children. Hundred-degree heat out there, if you didn't notice. There was no signs at that bus stop saying where the new bus stop was. I mean, it was like there was no bus stop ever there. So as I said, I just started walking and finally came upon a bus stop. Now, what I would like to know is, why was that bus stop changed? And for what reason? Because to me, it made no sense. It makes no sense. So I'd like to bring this before you, fine people, and maybe y'all could find out, why did that happen? Because I doubt if the people who made that change take the bus. I would assume they would drive to work and drive back. That's the time. Oh, okay, hey, great. And also, the bus stops are filthy. They need cleaning. They haven't been cleaned in about months. So I'd just like to lay that on you, too. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Ms. Hendricks?
Yes, good morning, Chairman, members of the board, MJ and the RTC staff. I'm Laura Hendricks, and I'm the CEO of TransDev U.S. And I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you to MJ, the RTC staff, the TransDev leadership team, all of our team members, and our union partners. This has certainly been a challenging transition for us, and we've been met with some unexpected concerns that we did not anticipate. But you have our commitment that we are going to provide the resources and the support necessary to deliver the service that the community expects and deserves. So we will be here. We will be interactive with our team members and our operators like Brian Spruss today. We recognize that we have not executed perfectly, but we anticipate that you will demonstrate through the service delivery, we will deliver every day better than what we have. So thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here yourself. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment?
Morning, William Lynn, Las Vegas operator. I just want to say first, Francis, you know, the RTC is taking a great loss today. MJ, you know. And I've seen how heartfelt she was. And then, second of all, I wanted to say thank you for, when you were bringing up the thing about the transit police. We still need to stay very vigilant about this situation. We had an operator less than two weeks ago at the terminal where the guy reached around the barrier, spit in his face, and security's right there and can't do nothing. This guy was able to walk free. Meanwhile, this operator for the next 13 months of his life has to constantly go to get tested to see what he may or may not have contracted from this individual. So I know that we're saying that there's all kinds of things we're looking into. I appreciate that aspect, but what we have now is not sufficient. It's not. When three guards have to watch the situation happen and watch the person leave, what's the point? Why are we spending this kind of money for somebody to say, yeah, see him go that way? There was plenty of passengers that seen that, the video's seen that. We don't need to pay that kind of money for somebody to just watch somebody leave when somebody gets assaulted like that. And obviously, I've been busy with everything else taking place. Like I said, the transition has been nothing but smooth. I would definitely say the worst transition in the history of histories, guaranteed hands down. But I'm definitely back on paying attention to, that we've had at least seven operator assaults this last month, not to mention passengers and stuff. I think that we've started lacking since the new company came in on keeping track of those properly. We had a whole process in play. MJ, I think you know how they were feeling out. There were contact teams and everything else. I think that's fallen off, and I think we need to get back to that as soon as possible, obviously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And perhaps you could provide your contact information to Ms. Hendricks, so she can follow up with you. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment?
Good morning. My name is Jamil Meeks. I represent Teamsters Local 631. I'm also representing the dispatchers and road supervisors. Often, when you hear these meetings, you often don't hear from a dispatcher or road supervisor. I represent that right now, today. Right now, we have several issues, like my comrade said, ATU. My brother, he also mentioned that we have to keep an eye on the security and what's happening with that. But also, the first line of defense of what the drivers see when they come to the yard is the dispatcher. Our job is to keep them in the green and not the red. But we also have to have the essential tools that we need to follow that day-to-day. And we just want to make sure that our contractor that we work for understands that as well. Like, they also said the transition has not been as smooth. It's been very bumpy, but we're caught in the middle. It's also affecting the general public. Both ATU, Teamsters, we both are coming with the common goal is to serve the general public and give them the great customer service that they need. In order to do so, we have to make sure that we all have the essential tools in-house first before we can go and serve the public. So we are glad to hear that you guys are focusing on some of these issues. We are glad to hear that you guys are trying to make some four-way and leadway. I do like the fact that the CEO is here to show face, that is a first step to show that we are trying to work together. We have an open-door policy, but that's not so open. Communication is not open in the yard. We can't get through to talk to people. There is no one to actually talk to. So hopefully, with her being here, that sometimes when mom and dad are home, everyone is awake to play, but when mom and dad goes away, the kids will play. So again, we just want to make sure that we keep these lines of communication open. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Meeks. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and this meeting is adjourned.